Let us pray. Almighty God, we pause before our agenda and the work of this day to acknowledge our concerns and weaknesses, to give thanks and to pray for our city and these city councilors. Send down on those who hold office in the city of Mobile the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. We acknowledge the ways we have become weary and worn by a political process often marked by tension. We confess our resignation to problems of crime, poverty, and violence, and the stranglehold of fear and anxiety in our minds, in our hearts, in our streets, and in our homes. We confess the ways we too grow resigned to the way things are and systems that refuse to change. Holy ones, save us from weak resignation. Remind us of our power to seek the welfare of this city. We acknowledge the many burdens we carry into this work. Attend to them, O God. We give thanks for the communities that support us, the spouses, friends, neighbors, and loved ones who sacrifice, so we may be here this day and in the days ahead. Bless them. We pray for all who are entrusted with the calling of public service. Keep them pure in heart. We pray for all elected and appointed officials at the national, state, and local levels who seek justice, peace, and the well-being of their communities while maintaining trust, respect, and dignity of their office and for those whom they serve. We pray for the residents of this city. For all those seeking full, meaningful employment, we pray for work. For all those seeking education, we pray for inspiring teachers. And for all those seeking peace, train us all to the work for justice. We grieve with all those who grieve in this city remembering those who have died and are no longer present with us. Bless the work that is before this city council today. May every decision that is made, every debate addressed, and every correspondence we respond to this day be done with generosity of spirit. Turn us again. Reorient our hearts. In all we do, in all we say, may we seek the welfare of this city. We know you by many names, and I pray today, in this moment, in the powerful name of Jesus the Christ, amen.
Amen. The United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Vice President Manzi. Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave's.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. We're going to ask that you turn off all electronic devices before or upon entering our meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution ordinance appeal a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and also give your address. We ask that any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item contact our City Clerk's office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject he or she wishes to address must be identified and pertain to City of Mobile business. Any person who has not been given proper notice to the clerk's office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item will not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed five minutes for your presentation. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute will remain for summarization. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any city council member who wishes to respond. We also ask to maintain decorum that there will be no undue applause and or public outcry during the course of our council meeting. Ma'am City Clerk?
Mr. Vice President, before we go to Madam City Clerk, could I have a moment, please?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say thank you and recognize Reverend Sterling Boykin, who was here today. He is my pastor at Ashram Place United Methodist Church, and just thank you for coming.
All right. Well, thank you Pastor Boykin. Glad you were able to be here today. Yes, ma'am.
Approval of minutes of January 2nd. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Minnesota approved.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. It's great to see all of our guests here today. I know that Council Williams has a couple of groups of distinguished individuals that he will represent, he'll introduce later. One is the championship volleyball team from St. Luke's, and then our Purple Heart winners from Foreign Wars, and so I look forward to those presentations. Let the record show that Sterling Boykin is also my minister. So we're delighted that you're here, Sterling. Great to see you.
And he also, our church also provides a location for some of Councilman Richardson's meetings, so.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
You're certainly welcome here today. The first thing I would like to do is read a proclamation about mentoring month, and I would ask Amy Rissar and Lee Parks to please come forward and approach the podium, if you would, and I'll read the proclamation. The proclamation reads, and you can bring your staff with you if you'd like, okay? The proclamation reads, whereas Mobile has a number of outstanding mentors who work selfishly to improve the odds of success for youth in our area, and whereas we would like to show appreciation for these mentors and encourage other Mobiians to become mentors, and whereas research has shown that children engaged in one-to-one professionally-supported mentoring programs are more likely to finish high school and are less likely to be involved in violence, truancy, and drugs, and whereas January has been designated as National Mentoring Month where Americans are called upon to recognize the importance of mentoring and to look for opportunities to become mentors, now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, Alabama, do hereby recognize January 2018 as Mentoring Month in the City of Mobile. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and all of the city council. I just want to take just a second with seeing Ashley Rich, another fabulous big sister. And for the record, at Ashland Church, we also have many fabulous bigs.
Yes, a lot of bigs at Ashram Place, yeah.
But I do, it was important for me to bring our staff today, and Lee Parks is a fabulous big sister and representative from our board, just to highlight mentoring. And I want to thank you all because we have bigs and littles, thousands of lives who are measurably changed in all of your districts. And this past year, though, I really want to say thanks because in a couple of your districts, we really increased the partnerships with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and I thank you for that. And I hope in all of your districts, we can take another step forward. In 2018, we are using national research done on Mobile and really trying to target our efforts to change the lives of our most vulnerable children and families. And with my staff team, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, who provide professional support, that's what separates us from every other mentoring organization in the world that we have here. We're truly trying to change lives, and we couldn't do it without our partnership with the City of Mobile and every other social service here in the city. And we're just so proud to be partnered with you all to uplift the lives of our most vulnerable. And we can't thank you enough. So thank you for recognizing the value of mentoring and that it matters, and for being a key partner in our efforts. We appreciate you guys tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I would ask Officer Charles Duberry to please approach the podium, and Director Barber, if you would join him. This is, Officer Duberry is our Officer of the Month, and the certificate reads, "In early December, Officer Duberry assisted in locating an individual wanted for questioning in several burglaries. He used social media to discover that the suspect worked at a local restaurant. Officer Duberry coordinated with management to determine when the suspect would be at work. As he arrived on the scene, the suspect fled to the back and attempted to hide in the attic. He was located and taken into custody without incident. The suspect was arrested and charged with burglary third degree. Two weeks later, detectives identified another suspect who was committing vehicle burglaries. Officer Duberry was able to locate the subject and take him into custody. One day after Christmas, officers responded to a report of a robbery and shooting. The victim described the two unknown subjects that had shot and robbed him. Officer Duberry set up surveillance at that location and observed the subject's vehicle." All of the subjects were detained. A search of the vehicle revealed the handgun used in the robbery. In total, the subjects were arrested on 22 felonies. The month of December is also when Officer Duberry gets back to his community. He had his second annual raffle drive to help provide Christmas for local families. Officer Duberry was able to pay 40 children's entire Christmas. Officer Duberry, along with officers for the 2nd precinct Squad A, also handed out presents to over 150 local children. His overall excellence and performance is a tremendous asset to the City of Mobile. Now therefore, on behalf of all the citizens, we are pleased to award the certificate of recognition to him as Officer of the Month for December 2017 with our sincerest thanks. Congratulations. Like so many of our first responders, there was someone in Officer Duberry's family that was a state trooper that planted the seed for him possibly becoming a Mobile policeman. Graduate of Theodore High School, he said he just likes the excitement of being a policeman because it's never the same thing any day, on any given day. But he also, and he didn't really thank me for it, but he was very, very pleased that we had stood up Police Precinct 2 because now it's only five minutes from his house instead of a 30-minute drive from where it used to be. So again, thank you very much, Officer Duberry. This past weekend, on Sunday afternoon, the mayors from the five largest cities in Alabama, I hosted them in Mobile. That's Mayor Tommy Battle of Huntsville, Walt Maddox of Tuscaloosa, Todd Strange of Montgomery, and Randall Woodfin from Birmingham. These meetings started four years ago. Hard to believe, but I've told this, said this before, never in the history of the state of Alabama have the five mayors of the largest cities collaborated on common problems, challenges, and opportunities. It's an opportunity to share best practices. So this past Sunday, when they came to Mobile, they brought with them their Directors of Public Safety as well as their police chiefs. So the collaboration, where the meetings go, is we all get together for a period of time, and then the executive directors of, the Directors of Public Safety and the chiefs, they go off and start sharing information. All in all, a great opportunity to learn from one another and to adopt best practices that somebody has already implemented in another city. It may or may not read that Mayor Maddox had never eaten an oyster, so he ate his first oyster at Wensel's, and he, matter of fact, he didn't eat one, he just ate two or three of them. He said he liked them. Anyway, honored to be able to host that, and we certainly picked up on some points, pointers that will help us be a better mayor, better administration, and a better city. I'd like to point out that for those that ride down Church Street and you see the remains of Fort Condi, where the big white wall is, and talking about the historic significance of Fort Condi, there's six sculptures that are on that wall, and there was no way that anybody could look at those sculptures and know who they represented. But they are, represent various eras in the history of Mobile, of those of ancestry or descent that had played a part in the formation of this city. So if you ride by today, under each one of them, as part of the plaque, you'll see that it, they read like, "A Mobiian of Native American descent," "A British of Native American descent," "A Frenchman of Native American descent," "An African American of," no, excuse me, I'm sorry, "A Mobiian of African descent," and all it says, "A Mobiian of British descent." So anyway, it helps tell the story about Fort Condi and about the forming of our city. So glad to see that that finally happened. Also, you should see changing out soon, all the statues that we have that surround the park, they are all being replaced with duplicate statues, but they'll have stainless steel underpinnings to them because there's been a problem with those statues, even though you don't see them unless you look really closely. So if you see cranes setting up and picking up a statue and putting in another, and it's not changing anything other than the composition of the statues has made up. Magistrates have actually moved into Precinct 2, which will be a big, big help for those that need to interact with our magistrates out in the Tillman's Corner Theodore area. They will be open to be able to pay warrants, traffic tickets, from 8:00 PM to 4:00 PM. The last item that I would mention is that we're still recycling Christmas trees. We've told you where that you could take them, and so if you still have a Christmas tree in your house or your backyard and you'd like to recycle it, please take it to one of the locations where we can do that. And I would conclude by saying, roll tide.
Councilman Williams.
Colleagues, Mr. Mayor, I think we all know that Mobile is the home of many champions, even Hall of Famers, and quite possibly in this room, future Hall of Famers. Certainly, that holds true in District 4, where we have some visitors that are with us today from St. Luke's. Now, these aren't one-time champions. They share something with the University of Alabama in that they are multiple champions. And in this room today, we have a team that won two consecutive state championships. They understand what winning's all about. I know that from the headmaster and from the athletic directors' viewpoint, they are both great students and great athletes. And they, they're no stranger to good, clean competition, which results in championships. And it's my pleasure today to present to you the head coach, Meredith Harvison, a champion, a champion, and one that leads by example and has put this winning team together. So it's my pleasure today to present a certificate to each one of these athletes, as well as Coach Harvison and the athletic director. And it reads, "Certificate of recognition, congratulations to the St. Luke's Episcopal School Varsity Volleyball Team for outstanding sportsmanship displayed in the team winning the 2017 2A State Championship by sweeping the tournament 3 to 0, and winning a consecutive, a second consecutive volleyball championship." The city council and the mayor commend the coaching staff and athletic director and all those athletes that participated. Congratulations. Job well done. Signed, John Williams, Councilmember, District 4. Congratulations. Coach, would you please tell us who came today and a little bit about your experience at the state championship? Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. We want to, on behalf of St. Luke's and volleyball team, we would like to thank you guys so much for having us. It's an honor to be here, and it's an honor for me to stand on the sideline and get an opportunity to coach these girls. We have three seniors this year, Natalie Bonner, Jada Carney, and Kellen Hensley. We had two juniors, Lauren Bailey and Brooke Threlkild. We had four sophomores, Abby Whitland, Elizabeth Roebuck, Anne Bennett-Hammons, and Abigail Lowry. This is the impressive part. We had one freshman, Grace Garrett. We had one eighth grader, Gracie Sims, and we had one seventh grader, state champion, Haley Patterson.
Wow.
Congratulations. We look forward to recognizing your third consecutive win next year.
Ladies and gentlemen, we ask again that you please silence your electronic devices. Thank you.
And Mr. Vice President, before she gets out of the auditorium, we want to recognize our district attorney who is here, Ashley Rich.
All right. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Chairman, if I may continue.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I think you all may have noticed that there is a distinguished group to your right, to my left, who I am honored to represent, not only on the council, but as a veteran in this community. It just makes me very proud. And before I go into any other comments, I would like to ask Dr. Barry Booth to make a couple of comments, if you'll allow it.
Good morning, council, and good morning, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your past support of the initiatives which included the Honor Flight South Alabama regarding veterans, World War II veterans. What a compliment it was for Colonel John, Ms. Gina, and Ms. Bess to be available when that plane door opened to greet those World War II heroes. They still talk about it. Secondly, I want to thank you for your support of the Directional Sign Program for one of the jewels of South Alabama, and that's the Alabama State Veterans Memorial Cemetery at Spanish Fort, as we refer to as Arlington South. The Directional Sign Program was so successful, it's eliminated the problems of out-of-towners being able to get to the cemetery and participate in the final salute for those people that have served our country. And for your information, and I know CJ understands this, we've had over 1,500 ceremonies at the cemetery and over 150,000 visitors. So it is truly a jewel in South Alabama, and wouldn't be that way if it weren't for the support of the City of Mobile. Also, I'd like to thank each of you that are present here today and those on the council for your family members that may have served or are serving now in the military around the world, and I want everybody to know that every single one of them is a volunteer, and never forget their families because they are with them all the time. The Military Order of the Purple Heart is a congressionally chartered veterans organization whose members have received the Purple Heart, given in the name of the President of the United States, to any member of our armed forces who has been wounded or lost in combat. While clearly this is an individual decoration, the Purple Heart differs from all other military decorations in that the individual is not recommended for this award. They are entitled to it upon meeting certain criteria. Unlike my dental corps hooch mate in Vietnam, Dr. J.C. Bond, who was awarded the Purple Heart and an oak leaf cluster, meaning that he was wounded twice, I am not a recipient of this decoration. However, I enthusiastically support this distinguished order that promotes programs that include suicide prevention, help for veterans with brain injuries, counseling for post-traumatic stress disorder, and assistance for women's health issues. These are all common challenges for combat wounded veterans. The Order of the Purple Heart continues to offer services that aid all veterans and their families, and continues to make significant contributions to all of our communities. The mission of being designated a Purple Heart City is to raise awareness and to honor those of our community that are recipients of this very special award. We thank you for considering and deciding to proclaim this honor to our veterans and to honor the City of Mobile. I'd like to introduce now Colonel Jim Eubanks, Colonel Eubanks. Colonel Eubanks is a Korean War veteran, a two-tour veteran of Vietnam, a combat medic during the Korean conflict. He'd like to say a few words and thanks.
Now, this is a particular honor for me to be here today. Back in the 1930s, I was a kid selling Mobile Press Register on the streets of Mobile and Dorfham, saying, "Extra, extra, read all about it." That was me. And my father was a Mobile City policeman, my mother was a waitress at the Battle House Hotel. So never in my wildest dreams did I think that some 70 years later I would be here addressing the mayor of our city and the city council and representing the people from the Purple Heart Association. You know, the Purple Heart quite often is given posthumously, and so this proclamation today, I think, especially honors those that, in Abraham Lincoln's words, "gave that last full measure of devotion." It also honors those who put themselves in harm's way in order to protect the liberty and the freedom of their fellow citizens, some of whom suffered grievous wounds and their entire lives were changed as a result of that, not only them, but their families, their wives, their children. So it is a great honor for me to say to you, thank you so much for this proclamation. I think in my over 31 years of military service, most of the soldiers I knew were putting themselves in that harm's way with the idea that that was what they were doing to protect that liberty and freedom that we enjoy in this country. And what they really appreciate having is their fellow citizens knowing what they did and appreciating it. And I think that this proclamation is concrete evidence that the City of Mobile and the council and the mayor and their representatives of the citizens of Mobile recognize that, and so on their behalf, I say to you, thank you so much. We will honor it forever.
For everyone's, I'd like to see, will all the PO, MPOH gentlemen stand please, all the members of Chapter 2206 of the Purple Heart? You know, books and narratives can never explain what combat is. People that have never been there can never understand it, but for you to take the time to honor these gentlemen is terrific. They deserve every accolade that can be thrown their way. And you know, I failed to mention, when I was speaking of the Honor Flight program, Chief Barber will always be Chief Barber to me, nothing else, but the Mobile Police Department. But the Mobile Police Department did a fantastic job of supporting us also, and I want you to know that. Please pass that on to all those concerned. Okay.
What a great honor it is, Mr. Chairman, for me to, on behalf of the city council and the mayor, make the following proclamation. Whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to any member of the United States Armed Forces who was wounded or killed in combat with a declared enemy of the United States. And whereas it is the oldest decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782. And whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among combat wounded veterans and their families, promote patriotism, support legislation, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. And whereas in the Mobile metropolitan area, there is a large, highly decorated veteran population, including many Purple Heart recipients. And whereas the city of Mobile has great admiration for these men and women who have served our country and acknowledges our veterans who have paid the high price of freedom. Now therefore, the members of the Mobile City Council, along with the mayor, do hereby proclaim Mobile, Alabama, Purple Heart City, and urge our citizens to show their appreciation for the sacrifices of the Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedom done this day in the city of Mobile.
Just before we conclude, I'm going to ask again, can all recipients of the Purple Heart who are here today, can you please stand again? Thank you all so much for your service. Thank you.
Councilwoman Small.
And CJ prepares. I have committed part of my discretionary funds, and I hope that the council may join me in making sure that wherever it is appropriate to put one of these signs in our city that we do so. Maybe one in each district would be a great gesture. Thank you.
I'm going to ask that the Port City Second Liners to come down, please. And I do concur with that Councilman Williams, especially at the veteran cemetery on Virginia Street also. I brought the chairman, to my colleagues, to the mayor. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I am a member of many organizations throughout the city of Mobile, from Cap Apple Side to 100 Black Men, et cetera. And I always stated that I was not going to join another organization again because my hands are full. I'm a member of two Mardi Gras organizations, Mobile Area Mardi Gras Association, MLK Mystics. But this particular organization that's behind me this morning, they kept on, I would say, hindering me in District Three. They participate in many functions that District Three have, from Baptist school to the Easter egg hunt and to things that I even do personally with my business as far as in different Mother Day brunch that we do every year in the city of Mobile. I said this particular group always, always volunteer. They are very sincere. They're not old. They are young. And they invest into the community. They invest in the community through scholarships for the youth, because if you don't invest the youth, you would not have a future before us. Also, this group is diverse, between male and female, and black and white. And with all the great things they do throughout the city of Mobile, I say I got to wear that green coat too. So I have became a member, a full-pledge member this past year, and I am a proud member of the Port City Second Liners. So therefore, they are celebrating their 10th year anniversary, and I want to present this proclamation as a kickoff to a great week that we have before us. And this proclamation reads, whereas the Port City Second Liners will celebrate their 10th year anniversary on January 12th through the 14th, 2018, in Mobile, Alabama, with an anniversary ball on Friday, a second-liner parade on Saturday in downtown Mobile, an award show on Sunday that will showcase pillars of the community. And whereas begun with four young people that desires to enhance the Mardi Gras was celebrated on the Gulf Coast, Timothy Hale Jr., Melvin Jones, Andre Ben, and Janaye Martin. And whereas has grown into a massive organization comprised of 50 educators, administrators, business people, nurses, musicians, and engineers. And whereas work year-round to give back to the community, award high school seniors scholarship to the college or university of their choice, and serve the local community by bringing Mardi Gras-style entertainment. Now therefore, I, CJ Small, councilmember of District Three, along with the mayor and the members of the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim Friday through Sunday, January 12th through the 14th, 2018, as Port City Second Liner Days in Mobile, and urge all citizens to join with us in this momentous occasion, done at the city of Mobile, Alabama, this ninth day of January 2018. CJ Small, councilmember, District Three.[1096.58][1096.58](applause). Let our president, Timothy Hale Jr., speak on behalf of the group.
It is an esteemed honor and privilege to our mayor, Senator Stimson, and to the city council. It's just an honor to be recognized for the good services that we do in the community. We are an organization that loves giving. Our pillars of our organization is God, family, community service, and Mardi Gras. And we stand behind them. And we believe that with our help and support, we will continue to make Mobile one of the best cities in the world to visit when it comes to Mardi Gras or any other activity that we have to offer. So on behalf of myself and my brothers here for the Port City Second Liners, we're here for the city of Mobile. Anytime you have something that you want to bring to the city or you need some enhancement with mentoring or anything positive, we're here for you. And we're going to stand for the people in the city of Mobile. So thank you guys for everything you do, and we really appreciate this proclamation. And we're here for you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
I also look forward to seeing every last one of you guys in the second-liner parade on next Saturday. Our old mayor knows how to second-line, guys. I would say I'd have known that. We did a great job at the moon pie drops, so. Yes, sir. Yeah, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to say that the Port City Second Liners, on New Year's Eve, took us from the Riverview Hotel down Royal Street to St. Francis. Down St. Francis Street, let me just say, the weatherman said the wind chill factor had us at 17 degrees. Myself, Matt Stimson, Councilman Williams, my Stimson wife Jean, and about 200 or 300 of us went, followed this band over to the stage. And I mean, they had this city rocking. They had to rock it. So when we got to the stage, they took to the stage and they rocked this city from the stage. And I'd just like to congratulate you all for doing an outstanding job. And we want you all to get ready next year. And I prayed that we wouldn't have the rain. We didn't have the rain. But I forgot to mention the freezing cold weather. Next time in my prayer, I'm going to tell the Lord, hold up on this cold weather. So we got hit with a blast of winter. But next year, I want you all to get ready to do the same thing. Take us down the street and kick off the moon, the infamous, the most famous, the most important event in the entire central time zone, the moon pie drop in the city of Mobile. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Also, I'd like to state that our president has stated that our mayor knows how to second-line, but also Councilman Dave also know how to second-line too. We had a second-liner parade a couple months ago, and Councilman Dave was one of the ones that led us off. But again, this coming Saturday at 3 o'clock, we do invite the city of Mobile to come downtown and second-line down Dolphin Street.
Councilwoman Small, before everybody gets away, can you introduce the members who were here with us today?
Okay, I apologize. This is our vice president and bar chairman and also founder, Melvin Jones. This is another one of the founders, Andre Ben. This is Antonio Coleman. And this is our chief of staff, TJ Pedway.
Great. Thank you. Nice to have you all here.
Well, congratulations on 10 years of hard work, our productive work in our community. I look forward to joining you all on Saturday and offering a toast. I just requested there'd be sweet tea in my cup. And I don't know how to second-line, but I'm going to try to get something together between now and Saturday. Thank you. Congratulations. All right.
Thank you.
Reverend Manziel, just pray and get the Holy Ghost, and you can second-line.[1386.74][1386.74](laughter).
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. General's adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on January 25th from 5:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. on North Florida Street.
So moved. In a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Reggie Hill.
Well, it doesn't look like he's here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, mayor Stimson, citizens of Mobile, good morning.
Morning.
I did get to see y'all last week because of a prior engagement, so I want to officially wish each of you Happy New Year. I hope everything is prosperous for you thus far, and I wish you the best as the year continues. I rise today.
Your name and address, please.
Yes, ma'am. Reggie Hill, 200 Government Street. I think we might just add that to the permanent record if that was possible. But moving on, I want to speak today about public safety. And before I do that, I want to thank each of you for the opportunity to even speak. In most cities, you're allowed to just come in and sign up, but there's a different process for the city of Mobile, and I respect that process. I respect the ideals that our leadership wants to have an opportunity to look into, what answers they might be able to provide, to actually be prepared, to see what we can actually do collectively to make something happen. Because that's what I want to see done. So I want to give great appreciation for that. In the idea of public safety, I think for far too long, and this is not just unique to Mobile, we've become too focused on the flesh and blood of the idea, missing the idea of the powers and principalities that influence those same individuals that we're doing so much to eradicate. I look at the input from different cities, the input of different plans, and I ask myself, is this not Mobile, Alabama? I ask myself, are we not 74 years older than the country? Are we not 117 years older than the state? Are we not the innovators that started so much of what the country does from right here? So why are we looking to other individuals and other practices to represent who we are as a people? Footsteps away from here, we can touch the oldest standing city hall in the country. And just last month, we had an opportunity to convene in that place, I hope not just for ceremonial ritualistic practices, but actually for the idea of us remembering that we are the innovators of this region. And I think that we each saw during the election cycle that the citizens of the city were confident in your leadership. They were confident in what you could bring to the table. They were confident in knowing that there was some idea put in place for us to move forward if we could actually do it. We have eight individuals primarily that represent the decisions of this city. And those eight represent a whole vast array of 192 different imaginations, interpretations, and ways things can be done. So that's a lot of pressure. And I don't think that a lot of people recognize how much it is just to sit in this position and take the scrutiny and all the insults or even the accolades at times too. But all of the, it's a lot that comes with it. And I don't think that people recognize that some of us actually show sympathy to that. Some of us actually are empathetic to what you're experiencing. But however, we would be doing a disservice to both you, ourselves, our communities, our neighborhoods, if we didn't come and address those things that are concerns for the people. And so that's what I'm going to do. And as we kick off the year, this is only the beginning. And I hope that we can continue understanding that we're going to have to come to the table together. We speak about the public safety issue. We want to implement all these things to pull back the guns. We want to implement all these things to stop the crime. But what are we doing to work on the mindsets? What are we doing to ensure that the people who are creating these incidents are actually experiencing a better quality of life? What are we doing to actually go into their neighborhoods where they're being influenced to do these things because they don't have anything else to look for? Look at our young people. The most hope and inspiration that they get comes from characters who really live a falsehood in their life, but that's what they want to be, because that's all they know. We look at an agenda item today, we want to spend nearly $300,000 in getting a plan for something where people are invested in it every day already. We have people who are engaged in it every day already. We have people who are ready to actually give input and share the burden with you. Too often, we think that people are worried about, well, we got to get the shine here, or we have to do this, or our name has to be in the forefront. I have to get the recognition. I could care nothing about that if something is getting done for the people. And I believe that each of you have been chosen to come and do that great work for the people. And I believe that all of you are capable of doing it from all aspects of it, from all districts. That's what makes Mobile so great. We talk about New York and how it was a melting pot. Well, really, Mobile was that first melting pot of the South. Whether it was commercial, whether it was residential, whether it was different people coming in, regardless of what it was, Mobile was that. And that's what the value is. So if we want to see that public safety, it's going to have to start in the mindsets. It's going to have to start with us not having to look for other people in other cities to give us ideas about what to do, when we can just bring the people to the table and figure it out together. We don't have to spend all this other money. We've already seen a budget cut within certain departments, and now they're having to exercise their resources to get something done when you don't even have to spend all of that if we just had these people at the table. It's about getting to the table. Now, anyone can come and complain, and I'll be done in about 15 seconds. Anyone can come and complain. But if they come and they put proposals in front of you, if they come and give you ideas of how this could actually be done, if they give you a plan and a map, and they show you how we can actually allocate the resources to be the best, then that's what we need to be looking at. It's 2018. It's a new year, so we should have new expectations for things to be better for this city. I'm confident that we can do it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. God bless you.[1797.23][1797.23](applause).
Right. Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Richardson.
Yes, I would just like to make one comment to Mr. Hill's remarks. I don't, I'm not going to ask you anything.
Okay, I got you.
You need to be seated. You need to be seated.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hill, you can be seated.
For a response.
You can't debate me.
He won't have, it won't be something to respond. You can be seated.
At a committee meeting, you can debate me. This is the council meeting we're conducting business. Mr. Hill made a remark that in some, at some city council meetings, you can actually sign up at the door and address the council. And I want you to know that every one of you out there could have signed up at the door to address us today. But you can only address us about issues on the council agenda. You can't come here today to talk to us about the transportation department in Money, Mississippi. Mississippi has nothing to do with us. You can't come here to do that. But you could have, every one of you could have signed up at this door and addressed the council about anything on this council agenda. You don't need to call us, you can walk right down here and do it, any day, any day that we are in session. So the thought that people in some other cities can do that, you can do that right here. If you want to talk to us, you sign up at the door. But you've got, but if you want to address us about something that's not on this agenda, you have to contact the city clerk's office by two PM on Thursday. Tell them what you want to talk about it, and must pertain, must pertain to city business, you can do it. So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Kevin Ball.
Morning.
I'd like to.
Name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Ball, nine fifty Dolphin Street. Want to just take the opportunity to introduce myself, Kevin Ball, and I'm speaking on behalf of a number of individuals who are like-minded, and that we'd like to address a particular issue on today. I want to first start by saying greetings to the city council. Thank you for allowing me for this opportunity to greet you, and also to the mayor's office and his esteemed staff. I'm here today just to place on the record the full support for Fred Richardson as the council president. All of you will receive a letter probably by the end of the day, so I was prepared to come here today and read that letter to you, but all of you know how to read, so I'm not going to, not going to take the time to be able to do that. But you will receive that.
Mr. Ball, we're getting some feedback that they're not hearing what you're saying. Could you speak into the mic, please?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So we, I basically wanted to go on the record to have full support for Fred Richardson. And that's what we're here to do today. I just wanted to, being a recent retransplant, because I was born and raised here in Mobile, Alabama, been living in Birmingham for the last twenty years, now that I'm back for the last several months, I look forward to the potential that this city has. And I definitely would like to see the continued ongoing cooperative spirit that the city council has, as evidenced today, as we've seen, between you honoring the veterans and Purple Star individuals, the Port City second liners who do a lot of great work for this city, but we also want to acknowledge one of our very own who deserves the opportunity to serve as the president. So I wanted to go on record to be able to show favorable support for Fred Richardson, and we do ask and humbly request your reconsideration in your vote and how you're handling this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to thank Mr. Kevin Ball and all of those of you who came down to show support for my announced candidacy to become president of Mobile City Council. I announced early that I would not seek reelection. I announced early that I would seek the presidency of the Mobile City Council, and that's what they are down here for. I thank each and every one of you for taking the time to come down. Those of you who came with Mr. Ball, would you stand? I thank you all very much for coming, and my message to you all is that sometimes God would turn a dungeon of darkness into an oasis of light. My point is, don't give up hope. Sometime, right would have to yield to might, but right will win. That truth, though crushed to the earth, will rise again. Keep hope alive. We have parted from a thirty-two-year tradition, and we yet still don't know where this path is going to lead us, but we will find a way. And when we find a way, I hope that will be a way of righteousness where right will prevail. Keep hope alive. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ma'am, city clerk.
David J. Smith.
Good morning.
My name is David J. Smith. I reside at sixty-eight sixty-one Greenway Drive, South Mobile, Alabama. To the members of the city council, to Mayor Sandy Stinson, to the officials who served the city in various capacities, again, I say good morning, Happy New Year. Again, I'm David Smith, president of the Mobile County NAACP. I come representing our executive board and members of the community that we serve. We are completely and honestly concerned about the impasse among the city council members in regard to the leadership of this esteemed body. The last time the city council presidency was at issue, the city council members broke with tradition of appointing the sitting city council vice president to rise, rise to the presidency when the seat was vacated by retirement. At that time, Vice President Fred Richardson was set to become the council leader, as has been the tradition. But protocol was breached by an informal straw poll among council members to make Ms. Gina Gregory the president.
Mr. Smith, I'm going to ask that, in our, in our rules, we ask that you not call out the name of any individual council member, not to address any individual council member. So if you could keep your commentary singular to what you signed in for, it'd be helpful.
Let me understand, I mentioned the mayor, you don't?
I'm, I'm just articulating to you the rules. These are the rules, and it's one of my responsibilities to enforce the rules. If you could, just stick to the subject that you signed in for. You can continue.
Protocol was breached by an informal straw poll among council members. The president was chosen. Being the statesman that Mr. Richardson is, he facilitated getting past that at that He's always tried to work with his peers. He's done the absolute best that he can for the citizens that he represents. So when the time came after last year's election to decide its leadership, three decades of tradition again was broken, and it was even suggested that the informal straw poll was improper, maybe even illegal. Because under the Zigbee Rule, a five-vote supermajority rather than a simple four-vote majority was decreed necessary to decide the council's presidency. So Mr. Richardson's four-vote majority is suddenly invalid, and three of you could not bring yourselves to consider Mr. Richardson as a worthy leader among you. We cannot understand this reasoning. We would like to know why. Why is the longest-serving member of this body, who has well-served the citizenry in Mobile, now unworthy of being council president, especially in his final term in office? We are forced to look at reasons left unstated. For instance, we know that by, by law, the council president is in essence the mayor in waiting, should something prohibit the ability of the current mayor to serve out that term. If you do not, if you do not understand that the citizens of Mobile are very, very serious about addressing this issue in a positive way, we will continue to come back, we will do what is necessary. We think that this is the right thing to do, and we'd like for you people to understand that it is very serious for the poor and black community that we have a representative that champions our causes, and we think that that is a person, Mr. Fred Richardson. Thank you for your time, and Happy New Year.
Ma'am, city clerk.
Ordinance is held over sixty-four zero zero one, rezoned property at eight twelve, eight sixteen, eight eighteen, eight twenty, eight twenty-two, Hockam Avenue, from R one and B three to B three.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Resolution is held over zero nine zero zero five, reallocate monies from Capital Project Airport Boulevard to grant fund to be used for grant match to construct sidewalks along Airport Boulevard. So moved.
Second. Probably motion and second, any discussion?
Yes, if I may address this. I'm actually very excited about seeing this on our agenda. I thank the administration for getting this to the table for the council's approval. This is a grant that will actually come through fruition, I think, not till spring or summer, but at this point, I didn't think it would even make it this far. It was a grant that was written through discretionary funds, and it was applied to the Metropolitan Planning Organization for their review, and it, it actually didn't make it the first go-around. However, one of the cities slipped up and does not have the match, and by using some CIP money, that really isn't changing up very much because that project will still get done, there is still adequate funds to make the match. That is what the seventy-five thousand dollars will do. And again, I thank everyone who helped organize that and get it this far, and I hope that the council will support this TAP grant initiative. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Twenty-one zero zero six. Authorized contract with Quorum Air Conditioning Company for Arthur R. Outlaw Convention Center chiller replacement.
So moved.
Second.
Probably motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Twenty-one zero zero seven, authorized professional services contract with Blouse and Associates for consulting services to help the city develop a citywide parks and recreation system improvement plan.
Move to postpone for two weeks.
Second.
Probably motion and second, that design will be postponed for two weeks. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Twenty-one zero one two, authorized contract with Melvin Pierce Painting for Fire Station Number Fourteen, plaster repair and painting.
So moved.
Second.
Probably motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Consent resolution is being introduced for the first time, fifty-eight zero one four.
Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of resolution fifty-eight zero one four.
Second. Probably motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Fifty-eight zero one four, authorized removal of weeds, group fifteen seventy-four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, zero one zero fifteen through twenty-one zero nineteen.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of all resolution except for zero one, oh one five, oh one six, oh one eight, and oh one nine.
Second. Probably motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Twenty-one zero seventeen, authorized contract with tendle construction for Hillsdale Community Center ADA-compliant unisex restroom.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Resolution is being introduced for the first time, zero one zero twenty through twenty-five zero twenty-two.
All said, resolution to relive for one week by counter rules.
Announcements.
Oh, we'll start today with Mrs. Gray. Thank you, Mr. Vice President, appreciate that. Just one announcement for District Seven. I mentioned last week that we are planning a District Seven community meeting. It'll be the first one for 2018. It will be mid-February at the Vision Center over off Forest Hill Drive. We're still getting the dates situated, but you'll be getting postcards soon along with a list of the speakers. Our focus will be the widening of Ziegler Boulevard, as everybody knows, that's been ongoing for some time. We are beginning to see some life in the project, thankfully, and we'll just bring everybody up to date on that and some other topics as well. So again, the first meeting of 2018 will be at the Vision Center in mid-February, and we'll be getting out the information shortly on that. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Mrs. Rich.
Thank you very much. The mayor already mentioned the opportunity to recycle your Christmas tree. You have, I believe, until the fourteenth to do so, and I hope you'll take advantage of it. And there are some mix-ups about where people are bringing their tree out in District Six. It used to be at the old Bruno's, but it's in Medal of Honor Park, so just so you make note of that. I'd also like to thank our Public Safety Director, Barbara, for working to get out information about Project Shield. I've already had two neighborhoods contact Kevin Levy about how they can work with him, and I think one has even got an assigned meeting. And this is a way to get cameras in your neighborhood for safety purposes and working with the city and their knowledge, and again, it really is a very helpful thing for citizens to work with somebody that is so knowledgeable about the process. So I thank you for that. And again, it's in my newsletter, the document that kind of reads about the project itself and how they can be helpful in the community, and if anyone would like more information from my district that I represent, please contact my office, and I'll be happy to give you the proper contact for Project Shield. Thank you.
Mr. Daye, show announcements. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those who saw the agenda today, we had an item twenty-one oh one eight to authorize a contract for tennis court repairs for Fickers Community Center. I'd like to say that since, most of all the time since I've been on this council, the tennis court at Fickers Community Center, at Fickers Park, has been dysfunctional. Couldn't use it. And although I advocated for it, I had no money allocated to my district wherever I could fix it. Well, I have some money now, and that the record shows, we are getting ready to fix the tennis court, and we're going to add to that a pickleball court, and the pickleball, pickleball is a new sport for seniors. So we're going to add pickleball to that, to the tennis court. So unlike any other park in the city, at Fickers, you will be able to play baseball, softball. softball, football, basketball, tennis, you can swim, we have a walking trail, we have a picnic area where you can grill out if you want to, and I'll challenge you, and we're getting ready to build a new basketball court up there, unlike any basketball court in the area outside, and I'll challenge you to go to any park in the city and find these venues. We may not be the largest park in the city, but I guarantee you, we have venues at this park unlike any other park. And when we get this tennis court done, resurfacing and all up and ready to go, it's gonna be a whole new day at Fickers Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Small?
Thank you, Brother Chairman. Speaking of parks, you know, I got some very exciting news on last week about Wash Park. Wash Park is located off Adolphina and Parkway on the north end, and when I first took council, you know, kids was out there flipping abandoned tires, you know, for, you know, for a, I'd say playground equipment because there was no decent playground equipment out there. So I got word on last week that we had just about completed with the revitalization of Wash Park, so there's some great news going on in the city of Mobile dealing with parks. And again, I would say thank God for CIP. I would like to announce that on Saturday, January 20th, 2018, Our Lord's Knights of Columbus and the Parkway Senior Citizen Foundation is having their ninth annual spaghetti dinner. This is to benefit the Parkway Senior Center, mission on to reach out to the seniors in the community, not just on Adolphina and Parkway, but in the surrounding areas. The time will be from 11:30 a.m. until 1:30 p.m. at Our Lord's Parish. For dessert, tea, spaghetti, salad, and bread, the tickets are $7. And again, we are asking for the community to go out on Saturday, January 20th, 2018 to support the seniors center on the Parkway. Again, this would be held at Our Lord's Parish Hall on Barkin Boulevard, which is located off Adolphina and Parkway, from 11:30 a.m. until 1:30 p.m. Again, remember that District 3 is a place where things are happening. Thank you, Brother Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I would remind everyone that is traveling in our city trying to get to church or to another important appointment on Sunday morning that they may encounter delays. I ask them all to be patient with the intersection traffic control. We have always done our very best through Mobile Police Department and all the law enforcement entities to make it as safe as we can for the First Light Marathon. And so the large First Light Marathon will be this weekend, and I think I have my dates right, at about 8 o'clock in the morning downtown, Government Street will be closed down, and then it'll go around our city and almost all of Adolphina and parts of Broad Street, so I just ask everybody's patience downtown, west of town, all around Spring Hill, just to take their time as they make their way through those traffic control points. And what most people may notice as well is that we have barricades downtown, and that means it's time for Mobile to celebrate in a big way. And that starts very quickly, but two and a half weeks from now, the Conde's will roll on a Friday night here in town, and we're gonna have times, again, we gotta be patient and know that there's gonna be some places in our city we can't get there. I think that last year, we had record years of good conduct, and just remind everyone that the barricades are there for everyone's protection, and please recognize them and never cross a barricade. It is an automatic reason for detention, and we don't want to ruin anybody's celebration this year or any other year, but for everybody's safety, please recognize those barriers wherever they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I want to start out by recognizing a couple of people who are here in attendance. I want to recognize Ms. Mary Taylor Stevenson, she's the president of the Lafayette Heights Neighborhood Association, works very hard in Lafayette Heights and across the district. She also coordinates... Pardon me? Ms. Stevenson, if you wouldn't mind, would you stand? She recognizes, she organizes my annual Christmas fellowship, she does a great job. Let's give her a big round of applause. And there's another individual here who was a part of a transformational event last month. On December 12th, the state of Alabama elected Doug Jones to serve our community in the United States Senate. Totally unexpected, a lot of people thought it never would happen, it did. And the mastermind behind that great victory is a Mobile native who happens to be here today, his campaign manager, Mr. Wade Floyd Perry. Mr. Perry, where you standing? Let's give him a big round. And I'm hopeful that his ties to Mobile will help us keep Mobile's issues and concerns and needs on the forefront of Senator Jones, so we appreciate all that you've done. Happy to be on the midst of our Mardi Gras season. A lot of what Councilman Williams has said and things I've wrote down, we need to certainly be mindful of these reserved parking spaces of our barricades, make certain that we keep an eye on our young people. We want our Mardi Gras experience to be a crime-free one, an enjoyable one where incidences won't take place, and one that everyone can come out and just enjoy the spirit of festivity. And so we look forward to that. I ask my neighbors in the Down the Bay and Church Street East areas to have some increased patience. I know as we get ready for Mardi Gras, you always have to find different routes and alternative ways to get home, to get to church. We're used to it, we kind of signed on to it by buying property in these communities. So we ask for your continued patience as we get ready to celebrate our historic Mardi Gras. Any other announcements from the council?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have three distinguished sisters that I did not know they were coming down today. I have two sisters and a brother. I want Sister Wilma, would you stand, Wilma?
Stand up, Sister Wilma.
I have Sister Thelma and my brother Danny. Yay! Thank y'all for coming.
Any further announcements from the council, from the administration? Do I hear motion?
Second.
Probably motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Music.